We're gonna call to order the study session. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. We apologize for being late. We're just getting all the Zoom stuff set up, so. With that, first item is approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda. Is it favor signified by saying aye? Aye, motion carried. Discussion item A is facilities.
So I'll just start by saying there are a number of different facilities issues that have surfaced over the past couple of years from art biker, tennis courts, roofs on some of our buildings, chillers, especially an old PHS, but I know that the middle school moved one as well. We've heard about the camera system and technology at the middle school as well as the public address system. All need to be addressed. We've also talked about the use of hand lines at heights as well as a middle school. And just having a vision for that work. And so we've talked about it and so it was proposed, it would you proposed it Jason? Now it's time to really start planning. And so kind of to frame, to frame the discussion around that. You'd sent an email about coming up with a multi-year plan. Starting at five years and then going out to twenty years that we would really every five years look at something new that we would address. As part of that discussion, we really have to focus on funding streams and how we would get that work accomplished. And so in the past, the board did prioritize some work around facilities. A lot of it really did focus on the high school campus and some of the alternatives that we weren't able to get. Thank you. But I guess, I guess this is, this is where that discussion kind of starts at. We know that there are some funding streams available Patterson School District being one. Unfortunately, the funds that they can contribute would be isolated to this campus. Fortunately, this campus does include art fiker. And so the, the initial kind of estimate or spitball on that project is around four million dollars. And so it's pretty pricey. We could look at other, I guess, other facilities or other things that we want to do maybe before that. But it is, you know, paying for those will be a part of, of mine. I believe I had sent an email to the board identifying different funding streams that we could use and even, even how we might tackle those in a more phased approach. Some of the, some of the funding streams that I kind of identified is that there are grants out there. OSPI had a school construction assistance grant. We do have land that we can liquidate. We have rented some of that land or long-term lease agreements. We don't know if there will be money in a, in our contingency fund left over from our construction projects once Wood Strand gets done. Donations or gifts in kind. We talked briefly about there, instead of running a bond, there is an opportunity to run a capital levy. So capital levies can be run at a rate say like fifty cents per thousand dollars of property value. And so specifically, we can target certain things that the community would pass that. Capital levies, levies pass at fifty percent instead of a bond, which is a super majority, which is sixty plus one. So we talked about help funds. We kicked around the idea of doing a foundation or doing some large-scale fundraising efforts to assist in some of that. There still is, you know, we still could feasibly go out for a loan. I don't know if that would be popular, but we'd be on the hook for that, especially with interest rates, you know, being slated to go up. I don't know that that's wise. And then just looking at different, different opportunities to raise revenue, whether that's through, we talked about selling advertising space once upon a time. From, you know, our streaming network to signs and things like that on our fences. Or even is, you know, in the past, it was talked about, you know, like taking money from or, you know, receiving money from large-scale donors and perhaps, you know, naming something. So, so those are, that's some of the kind of brainstorms that we have. We still have yet to resolve the discussion with Patterson. They made a proposal and they presented that to the board, but yeah, I think we can just kind of start there and and start talking about our vision and what we want to accomplish.
No, I appreciate that. I think it's important, you know, I look at our new, you know, our new schools, high school here, Keener Review, Heights, you know, now Wood Strand coming on board that I think it's important that we identify these facilities and Housel and some of our other buildings and et cetera, and then figure out the shelf lives. You know, I imagine, I don't know if it's in ESD or the builder can give us like, you know, a shelf life of some type of component within the school. I mean, this school runs on a lot of computers and you know, you know, so that we can actually start pigeonholing some of our, our money in, in that. And so.
Yeah, that's a great, that's another great point as well, but when you have as much technology as we do embedded into a building, that at some points can go obsolete. And so that has an expiration date on it as well. And so thinking about that, Construction Services Group is through the ESD. And so we haven't gone out to bid. We've kind of been able to work around that. But they're the group that we work with in managing our projects. And so, yeah, they can provide some insight into giving us some estimates on different projects. In fact, they probably do it for free. I don't want to speak for them, but in the past, they've been really, yeah, I had, in the past, they've been really open to talking about projects and in Prosser and then assisting us in managing that. The, the funding streams are tricky. For instance, so one of the discussions we had in the past was to look at the transportation building and moving back to that piece of land that we have in between Sun Terrace and Heights and building a new transportation area there. The state has matched and even we can get more match on that if we had a partnership agreement with another neighboring district. Without Patterson would be interested, but they aren't. Nonetheless, it's up to ninety percent match. And so if we raised a million dollars or nine hundred thousand locally, they would match ninety percent of that. So a million turns into two million. So it's a pretty good deal on some of that. Other funding streams are a little bit more tricky. Like I said, we have the blessing of, you know, whatever Patterson gives us is their contribution for the high school. We're able to use that on this facility. And then that, that's where that discussion was is maybe, maybe concession stand and restrooms for the baseball field and soccer field that we can use. Or maybe we put that in an account and let that accrue interest and we add to it until we get to the level that we're at. So we can fund our fiker. Or we phase our fiker and do it in three separate phases and address it in each phase.
Any questions? And I don't, Lisa's not on Zoom. Is that correct?
No, she's not. But what are the things in, I know that Indiana is, I see your name up there. We talked about Indiana doing compression planning. Piece that we can really start to focus on the projects that we want done. And then, then once we identify those, we can put price tags on them and then decide, you know, what's for a second next, you know? Yeah, exactly. And then how are we going to fund those as well?
Okay, great. All right, moving on. So policy procedure twenty-four ten was a high school graduation requirement. And I think we're just gonna have a good discussion about that.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can start with that too. So we proposed to cut the number of credits from twenty-six to twenty-four. That, the primary purpose of that was budgetary. And so the idea that we could reassign staff and that there would be fewer graduation credits. And so the collective bargaining agreement that we have with PEA says that we have to notify teachers five days before they, they have a new assignment. And so we tabled the discussion at that time. And so we're, we're hemmed in now that if we were going to make a budgetary decision and reduce the number of graduation credits, it would be a disaster at the beginning of the year. So we would have to notify the teachers. And then the master schedules would have to, we'd have to work around the master schedules. It's not purely impossible, but it's, it's extremely messy. So that was kind of, that was kind of the intent of that policy. And we hit a deadline that we kind of couldn't move forward with it. And so any language is proposed. Now Indiana talked about updating the policy. Her and Brian were working on cleaning up some of the language. Any of that would be, they would, they would bring it, but the credits would stay set. And basically, we, if we get in a position next year where we're talking again about budget cuts, it might come back up about the number of credits we require students. But for right now, I would, I would, you know, let the board know that I think it's a dead issue. So we can't really take action on it without it being, you know, very, very messy. So.
So if we do it, it would be the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
If you were to modify, if you were going to catch the credits, yeah, it would be for the, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. If you're going to clean up the language, you can clean up the language at any time.
That would give us plenty of time to talk about it too.
Yeah.
Instead of at the end of the year, kind of last minute discussion.
Yeah, the, the way that it's gone is that, you know, of course with the levy and you know, we've talked about a balanced budget before and wanting to get to that and even more accountability, fiscal accountability. But pulling the trigger on something like a balanced budget, right? And we're in the process of doing that. And really pushing hard to, and I think that's one of the pieces that came out of the levy discussions, or at least I heard that. And, and I think we had to acknowledge that as a, as a board, that we had different community members saying, it's like a black hole. You know, we're, we're being taxed and we're throwing our money into this and we don't know where it's going. And so we want more fiscal accountability. We want to know where the money is going. You know, our response typically on that or, you know, has been district budgets, eighty percent of district budgets are personnel. And so there isn't a lot of extra. You can see, you know, we get these vouchers approved. It's not, you know, it's no, no surprise where that money is going. We're, you know, we're public with that. So, so I would say that we've been working on that. I think that we've been trying to listen to our, you know, our community and constituents and taxpayers and trying to meet those needs about budgeting more conservatively. But for right now, I, I think that it's probably the most intelligent decision to stick with what we have. And then if it comes up next year too. Or if we want to continue to talk about budget books on that, then it possibly can come back to the surface. Evaluate, have more conversations.
Did you guys have?
Yeah, so we had some questions in the letter and in particular, the first question was what outcome was the district striving to achieve with the reduction in graduation requirements? So I hear it's fiscal.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I'm just, my name is Kim Hoyt. It looks like Hobbie. And I'm just reading the questions off of what we wrote collectively. It's the letter that you should have all received a copy of. And so, but yeah, that's the first question. What was the outcome? That you were ultimately trying to strive for with changing it from twenty-six to twenty-four credits? Would you say it's fiscal or was there some different?
No, I think, you know, my personal opinion is, we came into, you know, a budget cycle this year that was budgeted to be one point six million dollars in the hole, in the red. You know, we can't functionally do that long-term. No business can. I mean, this is, I mean, that granted, this isn't a business, but it, it does bring in revenue and it does expand it. So starting with trying to balance a budget, we had all these different options that Matt and Craig and Indiana brought forth when we were having budget discussions. And that was one of the options. Was to, to try to get as close as we could to balance our budget. So that, so it's purely fiscal.
But yeah, and to add to that, so we are, it is built on, we do work around formulas and models.
So is there a way to get some of those formulas and models? Because like for example, I pulled off of the Washington State Fiscal Law dot gov website of K-12 school districts finance data that you provided. I looked at our staffing and what percent of our budget goes to teaching? And compared that, they provide a nice graphic of how it compares to twenty districts that are similar in our population size and to the state. I look at that and ours is fifty-five percent while the state average is sixty percent and comparatively to others, it's fifty-nine percent. And so we're already below staffing area. And then I can look and see, you know, what's high and what's low compared to the state average. So it'd be great to see some of your models in a very clear manner because when I look at something that's very concise like this, it looks like we're already underneath the state average and districts of our size, five percent.
Yeah, so those are, you know, those are based on different resource allocation works. And so for instance, we don't access grant funding to pay for some administrative salaries. We do oftentimes hire more Paris than we do teachers. And so there are different resource allocations that we sometimes to put a Band-Aid on there, that, you know, put a Band-Aid on a situation. And that Band-Aid becomes a permanent fix. And we do never, you know, we never remove those. And so district to district, staffing, I think staffing is different in our district. We have satisfied those staffing requirements, but in my mind, when we talk about a prototypical school model, it is based on a number of students, a number of teachers and the idea with twenty-four credits being the requirement.
Well, so I guess I'd really like to be able to see those models. That way we can ensure them. That'd be excellent. I know that there, there's a feeling that there's transparency with the numbers, but I can't find the numbers that the district is looking at. I can just find the numbers at the state website. And that's what others throughout the nation are from Prosser High School graduates see also. And so if there's a way to release the transparency of the, how the numbers are being crunched and how they're being allocated. I think a huge step in transparency for the community.
Craig Reynolds is on here and I would invite you to set up a meeting with him and.
But instead of me setting that up, is there a way that collectively, the whole community can see that transparently? Because I know it's not just me. And it's not just Prosser High School teachers. I know it's the community that would really like to understand where our deficits are at, why they're that way. Because when we look at things in other manners that are presented, we don't see it.
Okay, yeah. In fact, we could get Craig to set up a presentation and talk about staffing and resource allocation. Another piece on that too is that I think when we look at staffing and how things are staffed, there's also the idea that what the, the amount of, this went away with the state salary schedule. Is that collective bargaining agreements in local districts exceed what the state has allocated. And so when we're talking about the state gives us much money for teachers, we fund probably below that because we pay higher than what the state gives. And that's for a lot of different contracts for administrators. Then what we're given from the state, we actually spend more on with our staff.
We also have a lot of staff that are on grants money as well.
Yeah.
And so that doesn't come out of what the state allocates. That actually adds to
Yeah.
what is given to the district.
And we tried to shift that.
But Matt.
We've tried to shift that to even pay for more, more people out of that. And that's one of those, that's another staffing piece. Is that sometimes you can use that grant money and, you know, really leverage that to pay for staff or administrators.
So my, my question would be in our staffing models, does it take into account that like we're, we're being told that we're overstaffed? But does that take into account the fact that a full quarter of our staff members are marked as CTE in the district according to our OSPI report card?
Yeah, CTE is probably on a different string.
Right. So that's my question is, are we comparing, it's a model of how many students to how many teachers? And those teachers are, I'm wondering if those teachers are being included in the main group, even though their funding is not the same stream.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
But like I said, Craig, Craig Rickfallek was in your building, walking through that. Craig can walk you through that and even set something up before, before he's out and probably present it.
Yeah.
Sorry, Nirmal Joshi, based on some of the parent reactions over the past two meetings about why they are leaving the district. Now, how would you account for the fact that, okay, you're saying you're cutting down to twenty-four for budgetary reasons? Yet that seems to be also a main driver behind why parents are leaving the district or sending their children elsewhere. So short-term budget cuts.
To what extent?
Of the two hundred and thirty-seven that were surveyed, I believe, the ones that responded in the letters. And
Are you talking?
I'm talking about the parents that are in the district that are sending their children outside. So if you are looking to reallocate staff, the assumption would be then that you will not be able to offer the additional courses that those parents want.
The high cap courses. Yeah. And so that's another model that say, for instance, Bridgeport and Wenatchee is basically eradicated all basic level curriculum and all their curriculum that's high-end. And so it's not either, it's not binary. It's not either or. It's not, you know, we're not saying that either you have AP classes or you don't. We actually could push students into that based upon PSAT scores, based upon grades, based upon a lot of different things. Our student service department at PHS hasn't got to that point yet. I'm confident they will in the near future though.
Can you explain what you said a little bit more? I didn't follow that with what Mr. Joshi had said and then the comment. I don't see a connection there. So could you help me?
So he's talking about eliminating high-end, you know, like college and the high school courses, AP courses, things like that to satisfy this, right? Because the way that we, we do student-driven scheduling, right? Isn't that correct, Brian? That is correct. So if there are classes with like three kids, number one, it's not equitable. You have three kids in a specific content area. Now, what they do in Bridgeport is they push students in the high-end, very rigorous courses, the entire building. It's done on a smaller scale. But it's not either or. It's not, it's not the fact that, oh, we're requiring twenty-four credits. And so we're cutting out all the rigorous curriculum that makes a high school, meaning, you know, high school education meaningful. So that's not, that's not exactly what the plan is or was. In fact, we've done nothing but increase rigorous curriculum since I've been here, right? And, and more courses. Indiana has added in, in tandem with the high school staff has added more college in the high school and rigorous courses for students to.
But would you be able to keep that going if you come back down to twenty-four? That's the question. Because if you come back down to twenty-four and re-allocate staff, would you seem to be able to do that at the level that you are doing right now or?
Yeah, that is a question. Our, our counselors identifying students who can be successful in those. I know that we are in Abbott district, one of Abbott's philosophy is plus one, right? So you take a rigorous course load of plus one, you can stretch yourself. And so that's really what we're looking to do is.
That requires a whole different, I mean, you're talking about a whole motivational change at the high school for your students to kind of do that. You can't just do that overnight. You have to really commit to that, kind of like put out a whole plan.
You do, yeah. There has to be support mechanisms involved in that. But I believe that our kids can do it. I believe that high expectations are a pathway to build more successful schools.
Not do it. It's just that you cannot just say that I believe that they can do it and then just leave it aside and hope that it happens.
No, I said support it down on paper.
Well, I think, I think we're getting sidetracked here. You know, the part of this conversation was when we had budget discussions, these rooms weren't full of people. I'm going to tell you that right now. Now that we started implementing some of these and starting to work on our budgets, now we start getting involvement. So it takes all of us to be involved, not just the five of us or the admin. It takes, you know, I don't remember who said it, but somebody said, you know, being in a small town is both a blessing and a curse, right? I think it was Marcy, but don't quote, quote me on that. And the reason it can be a blessing is that we're all here trying to do the same thing. You know, we see everybody around town and so forth. You know, we're all trying to come to the same end goal for our schools. But it takes everybody to be involved, right? And now everybody is starting to get involved. And I think that's where we're going to start to make things happen within the school district.
Well, and one of the things that we really looked at was a reduction in the social studies credits and how I lost my turn of thumbs, I'm sorry. But that, so many of our kids, we've, we've asked the counselors. When kids go for electives, which ones do they go for? Social studies. And yet that's the area that was going to be cut. It, it just seemed arbitrary, not arbitrary.
Can you, can you share that data? Cause I'd actually like to see it.
I can ask the counselors for it. Yeah. Yeah, they say that social studies has the electives outside of CTE that kids want.
Yeah, I mean, so, so that, so this kind of, that kind of element is, is what we're looking for, right? You know, we're not trying to be up, up here trying to do it ourselves. It just takes everybody, you know, so that information would have been helpful two months ago when we were having these conversations, right?
I understand that, but it also helps if you ask for the information. We have not been asked or even consulted at all. It was thrown at us and we were like, whoa, hold on, wait a minute.
But that's part of being involved, right?
Right, but we can't know what's happening unless you tell us.
So we sat in, we sat in these rooms, not only here, but down in the auditorium for two months talking about the budget.
And I missed all of four board meetings since the shutdown.
Perfect. But I didn't see you here helping us out. So I, I don't want to get in an argument and I understand that we need to work together and we need to communicate to, to everybody that this is kind of the plan going forward, but also when we're discussing it in this room, you know, we, we sat in the auditorium for, I don't know how long, and there's four people there. You know, and a few people on Zoom. So I, I think we can all get there. You know, let's just work together, right? And come to that.
Communication on points.
Exactly. I don't.
That's what we're hoping to build is that communication both ways.
I, I would even go as far as to say when, when the trimester schedule was implemented, the board was called to make a hasty decision on that. And so there's even, there's even that, that, you know, you're saying, oh, well, this was pushed on us. I, I think that, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I know that, that, that was done in pretty, pretty short order that the, the district approved that. And that was a little bit before I got on, but I inherited that.
You and I came at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I heard nothing but how many years of studies and visits and all of these other things went into that.
I was on board. And I heard about it right before school started as a board member. That we were going to a trimester system. And I wasn't very happy about it.
Prior to, I, I don't know when you were notified.
That's when I was.
I know when all.
Yeah, we're kind of getting weeds again.
I'm getting off track, but yeah.
Go ahead.
So I was just hearing everybody's kind of perspectives of wanting to have stakeholder input. Um, there's a delicate balance in stakeholder input. Like, are you really wanting all of your teachers to be here every single meeting on a Wednesday morning? For two hours? Is that what you want your teachers' energies to be? So I've been, you know, I've been in so many workplaces, whether it was at Safeway or it was out of. The research center or if it was at a university or it was in a nurse, a daycare or a plant nursery. I've been at so many jobs and there's a delicate balance between. The board that guides something, wanting input. And the people under them. That delicate balance of like, you don't want everybody to give opinions constantly. Their own decisions can't be made.
For sure.
And yet you guys do need information. And so I know it's going to be a delicate balance for you as leaders. To figure out what you need information on and when you need us to truly be here. Where you really want our energies at. I know you really want our energies at prepping curriculum and teaching our students. I know you need our input at certain times, but I don't think you want us here every single Wednesday. So to find that balance for us, that's what we're asking. It's like, when you need information, ask us for it. And we'll be glad to be there. And if you need us to be there the week before and five weeks later, we can do that. But if you want us there fifty two weeks a year. I don't know if that's where you want our energy.
I think the important, at least for me, it'd be during, you know, the budget cycle. You know, I think that's, I think that's an important part of what we do. But I don't disagree with that. You don't, you don't want to be here every Wednesday.
Several adjustments to schedule between the seventies and the eighties. We looked at seven period day. We looked at adjusted trimester system and visited. Other communities, other schools, had folks come in and make presentations. And. That's not the first time we did that. Uh, if you look back historically through the curriculum development at this school, as you can see that that. Uh, was, was viewed and uh considered wanting at that time.
I was just gonna say that Susan, we're a teacher at the high school and um. At the high school, we did a lot of investigation. We looked at the block system. We looked at, at um trimesters. We had people come from other buildings. We went and visited their buildings. We had study sessions and so. We felt that the trimester one wasn't a hasty decision on our part because we, we, after going through that. Um, that was kind of the consensus of the staff and it sounds like it wasn't the, the, it was kind of presented as a. Fate of complete to the board, but the, the high school staff felt like it was pretty well considered because we, I don't know how long it's been on that, like a year.
Over a year.
Yeah, it was more than a year, but it, it, my memory is a little fogged on how much it was, but we did a lot of work on that. And, and.
Yeah, yeah, I was saying, that was during that transition period and obviously. And that's when Deanna was in charge and, and she did not convey that to the board.
Yeah, she was at some of our meetings and.
And so, uh, and that was really unfortunate because it was a blind side for all of us. And it was real hard for us to. Uh, kind of wrap around that.
Right.
Okay, we're getting off.
So I, going back to the, sorry, Jason Crook, a teacher at the high school.
Yeah.
Um, I had just a, going back to the credits and the financial portion of it. Um, so my question is. Setting up high expectations for our students. I think every single teacher in this room is very much on board for setting high expectations for our students. Um, I don't know how. Switching from twenty six to twenty four graduation requirement communicates high expectations for our students. And on top of that, we already have students who are finishing their requirements early. We, we have the opportunity to earn thirty credits at the high school, seven and a half per year as it stands right now. This actually might be going up slightly because they're also going to be earning credit for our social emotional curriculum in Mustang period. Starting next year, I believe.
I didn't see it in course power, I just probably that didn't consider.
That's great.
Okay.
So, so they have the opportunity to earn more than that. Thirty two credits. Now, at this point. They, we already have students who can finish their, their graduation requirements early. And be done before their senior year. If we lower that, like, we already have students who are at that threshold as juniors. And who would, who would already graduate. I'm wondering what is their incentive for continuing on? That, that seems like a large amount of F T E to just lose. If for them to pursue interests elsewhere rather than at the school, even though we might be able to adjust staff, move people around. I, it feels like we're dropping the ball for our students.
Yeah, so I reached out to a couple principals I know. Um, the principal of Pascal High being one. Um, can ask him and he saw that is an issue. And he said, no, because of the work that their counseling department is doing and the hard academic press that they're pushing on students. Um, that they have twenty four credits and they don't have, they're not losing F T E. So I, I think that there is a, uh. You know, I, depending on how that system's run. Um, and with the work in your student services department, that that may be a non-issue. Um, the other assumption is, is that more is, uh, more is better. Um, and, and I would question that assumption, um, because I do think that rigorous courses. Uh, maybe are more meaningful um than say a run of the mill. I, I don't know.
And I, I completely understand where you're coming from with that, with that sentiment. And I, I agree that like getting quality courses over quantity of courses is the ideal. Um, I guess with our student driven scheduling, the, the fact that it is student driven, I know that there are a lot of students who don't currently have that drive, especially. Coming off of COVID. And my, my question would be, would it also be worth speaking with a district like Seela that has a twenty seven credit requirement? I mean, especially given the fact that we heard from Dr. What was?
Sloniger.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Sloniger. And I know I've, I've spoken with, um. Over at Eastern Washington University, um, some of the math department that has, that I've, I have relationships with, talking about. Um, requirements and things like that. And one of the things is they. It's hard for them to look at students who are at that bare minimum. They want to see students who push themselves, not just with like the type of classes, but. Like whether they, whether they look at a student who took a trimester off or a student who got, who has a full course load.
Yeah, yeah. My previous life, I was an assistant wrestling coach at Stanford University. I went through commissions training because the student has to get it on their merit. The wrestling building wasn't going to cut it. Right? And so it was all about what classes, not necessarily how many credits were on there. But specifically what classes were on there. Were they, you know, and I know that we've had for a long time, college prep. Um. Uh, college prep honors, things of this nature. And, and those are good, but they really were looking at A P and I B courses. Um, and that really was a difference maker, along with, I mean, along with S A T scores. And there was an amalgam of different things that really. Would um get a kid admitted to an elite school.
So one last question for me. So would this also entail then? Um, a restructuring of our primary kind of education pathways that we have the opportunity right now. We have uh eight or nine full sections of Alfred one in the high school. And so for a lot of our students, they just don't have the opportunity to take calculus, statistics. Uh, we, and we don't have the opportunity because we have all of that time that us math teachers are spending on that. We can't do things like teaching. Uh, you know, linear algebra and other computer science based maths, things like that.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I do think that we do have to, um, as a district, uh, backwards plan and backwards map. Um, that was part of the, I think, common course state standards. That, that was a, it was a push to provide more rigor um around some of those things. So. Um, yeah, I, I do think that we have to, that's a whole system wide conversation about pushing, you know. That rigorous thinking, deeper level questions, things like that down in the system.
It seems like this is all kind of a big system level discussion. It's not something we can just.
It is any, any type of school reform is a huge level, system level conversation. And any reform type of conversation, whether it's driven by budget or not, um, does create stakeholder interest in involvement.
So I.
If I could do one more quick thing, I forgot sidetracked on the seventh period day, but I really wanted to talk about briefly is, um, the only department I know much of is the science department. And a few years ago, uh, because of a staffing decision that cut our staff and we have. Uh, like there's a lot of C T E classes that can get science credit. And, um, but what has happened then is like right now, we only have a couple of chemistry classes and we have, we just now this year got a physics class back. And so I personally know people in town that they've said they're, they're sending their kids to running start because they can't get the level, upper level. Science classes. So, um, in my department, a staffing change drove. An exodus of students to, to, to get their credits in running start for those classes. And I've been here a long time and we've. We've always had to, at least to, I mean, even when we were like five hundred, we had two chemistry classes and a physics class. And now we're almost double that and we're still, and those are, those are gateway classes. I mean, when you look at the, at the, the four year college requirements for getting into the state. Once they say you need to have three years of science, one needs to be an algebra based science class, chemistry and physics. So those are kids not taking those classes. Um, means they're shutting that door on that possibility of going to a four year college. And, and so I just, that was what I wanted to point out that there is a. Uh, cause I know from parents talking to me as a science teacher that they are sending, that they're, they're encouraging their kids to do running start. To get those higher level science classes that we're not offering.
So I would even, in fact, I had a conversation just recently with a parent. Uh, around, not only, not only does our student need to take like an A P bio course. But the question about like, well, how is that, how is that funded, right? Um, and that funding makes a huge difference on what labs. You can, you know, you can do what enzymes are being purchased for some of the reactions, all those different things. And so. We don't want to just offer it to offer it to say, here's an algebra based science, just because we wanted it in our master's schedule. We want to do a really good job on it and expose kids. Um, and I think there are examples of, of that throughout the state. Um, North Central School, North Central High School. In Spokane has this amazing science program. And so that, that's part of it. When we restructure. Um, you know, like reallocating resources to push things up, right? Um, not to push it down and, and make it worse.
North Central was built on a huge donation though. The whole new building was built on a huge donation.
Yeah, yeah.
To get to that point. I mean, I love the fact that you guys started not looking at, you know, alternate sort of funding.
Yeah.
And I think that should be a very high priority in our district. Cause there are people in the town, you know, that give till it's hurt, give till it hurts and wants to give more. They've just not had an avenue to do it so far. And some of their ideas about advertising and those, those are great ideas. It just seems like shouldn't we brush those or should we, you know, those should be the ones that are bringing the money so that kind of we, we're secure in our funding. And then we can talk about these wonderful ideas that, you know, we all want for this district.
No, yeah, yes and no. So I disagree with that on the fact that it, you need to have a vision for it. And so the principal there, Steve Fisk, and one of their science teachers really started to have discussions about. What do robust STEM programs look like? How can we really grow this in a district the size of District eighty one Spokane? Their money's, you know, money's not really an, an issue. They have boutique schools where they have these shiny programs that they have. But I would say that the, the vision comes before the, you know, vision comes before anything else that it exists in somebody's mind. And then we start talking about how do we create that together and really make that program.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm talking about when you have to turn on a declared emergency. So to get across the emergency path are.
Oh, all right. Yeah, that's fair.
I'm sorry, I think it should be a gamble there.
Um, I, I like the conversation that we're having. And I think we do have two pieces of conversation. We kind of, we've been going back and forth between the two concerning both the communication. Uh, and the level of communication back and forth between teachers and the board. And also this particular situation that we're having. Um, moving credits from twenty six to twenty four. I think that from what I'm hearing, that I, I think, I feel like we can agree. That it would be prudent for us not only to, to have this conversation and to have this conversation prior. To any sort of a, a actual decision uh taking place. And then it would be prudent for us to both look at schools that uh exceed the twenty four credit limit and schools that. Choose to meet the twenty four credit limit and that we would consider both of those uh in equal measure to try to figure out what makes sense. I think a lot of the, the consternation that we have, that we've seen in this process. Um, comes from the sort of the, the order of which all of this takes place. You've expressed it in terms of the trimester situation. We've expressed it in terms of the credit situation that. We do need to have a process of communication where we have. Um, a, whether it's a committee or some formal way for us to address and research. These situations and come to a conclusion together, as you said, for our students as a whole. You know, before we get to situations where we're reacting, okay? You, just as you uh talked about having uh consternation with reacting to a situation. As you felt that you got it at the last moment. We're having that same situation here. I do think it's prudent for us to step back and look at process. How we come about, how we go about getting to these decisions and implementing that process prior to. Us ending up in this situation that we're in like that.
Well said, but appreciated. I do have a couple of questions for. Um, our audience here. So I'm like, never one to not learn. And so I learned that we're a student led schedule. Is that right? Student driven. So my question is, do we, what is the, and, and it doesn't have to be answered now, but what if we change that to a school driven? Schedule.
Say it louder again, please, Jason.
If you changed it to a, like a district driven schedule, like, um. I guess it'd be the only way I could compare that would be you're, you know, going into college, you're, you know, you went into a major. You had to follow specific courses to get. Uh, your degree in whatever you're getting it in. So you had to follow your core, core, your, your general ed. And then you went into your major courses and that's driven by the department that you're getting your. Uh, whatever it's called.
It, it generally is, uh. Ultimately student driven, but the students have to be provided an educated choice. And. We generally go, we generally, I'm still at it. We used to go, uh. From department meetings. Back to the kids, back to the department meetings, to the larger staff, to uh administration. And that was not necessarily a tedious process, but an educational process. Where we thereby develop amongst all of us. Uh, the next class or classes, series of classes, so that. Uh, nothing develops on its own. It all has to correlate with everything else. And I don't know where I was going with that.
Sounds good.
Things are a little different now.
Right.
It's a long process.
I was just gonna say, so when we talk about student driven schedules, uh, it really is a very long process. Uh, we get information back from students on what their, their interest level is in certain classes. Uh, based on the graduation.
Uh based on the graduation requirements that we have currently. We do an analysis of the number of classes that will be required for students to take the core classes. So. When we're talking about graduation requirements, those classes automatically have classes that at sections that we put into the calendar or into the the schedule. Because that's how many classes we need and are required. And we get to the electives. So once all of those classes are are generated, those sections are generated, then we look at how many elective sections. Are available to students and we put into the schedule the classes that are popular to students. That students want to take as those elective courses. And sometimes they coincide. So when we're looking at uh the option to take math, for example. Freshmen don't really have an opportunity to choose. They have to take Algebra one.
Mm hmm.
Um they have to take geometry. They have to then take a third. We have options now for third year math and fourth year math. So once they have those options. That's when the student choice comes in. And so that's when we build the schedule around that. If there are only, you know, four students that pick. That take underwater basketball, which isn't on our schedule. Um they choose that and then four students isn't enough to warrant a class because we can, we wouldn't create a class for four students.
Mm hmm.
Um we will create a class for sixty two students if they choose that class. Uh so that's when we talk about student student driven scheduling, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at all those numbers. Um for student interest based on what they want to take and what we can offer. Um talked a lot about different offerings today and and sometimes within departments, we don't have the expertise to. Um or not not the expertise, we do have the expertise. Sometimes we don't have the. College qualifications, the level of edu- education required by universities to teach a college and a high school course. Uh and so that becomes part of the reason uh we do have a number of classes on our schedule uh that we we brought back. We do still have chemistry, we do still have, we brought back physics that we wanted to earlier. Um and we're looking at ways to bring back other classes like calculus. Uh so, you know, we would love to offer those. Um and if we have the staff to be able to do so, then we would love to.
And if if I.
Well, I'm thoroughly sad brother baby.
But if I may say so, sometimes when you offer more electives, like what I feel is 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 um. Affecting the science department is that there's so many electives and there's not a lot of guidance on on meeting the standards, like you need to take these classes to meet the standards. And so. Um the kids, there's the kids are leaving here with like three years of of good life science stuff. But they're not getting the physical sciences because that's it's not, it used to be. That there was the basic core sequence that everybody took, physical science, biology, and then kids that wanted to go on to chemistry. And now with a with a lot of cross crediting options for CTE classes, they're getting their credits in a lot of other ways, but um the. I I think they they need more advising, like. Uh I was this year when I took, when I took a poll in my biology class, how many people were taking chemistry next year, I was shocked. At how few there were. And so I dug it up and I showed them. If you're thinking of going to a four year college, you need one of these classes. I mean, it's right there. And so I think a lot of kids, they're getting. Um you know, they're they're taking a lot of interesting classes, but I think they need more guidance on some of these ones.
Now, but Susan, that's not your place. We need counselors.
Actually, it is.
It is, it's with Mustang periods, we do a lot of. We need scheduling stuff too.
Yeah, they actually, we actually do the scheduling with our students in Mustang period. It's not with the counselors. And so. For example, I had four, I had four students I was working with on the last day of school, actually five or six of them. To correct myself there. And I talked to two of them. I said, what's your degree gonna be? And they told me, I said, well, are you taking chemistry next year, your senior year? And they said, no, I said, well, let's write an email to your counselor right now. You need to be in that chemistry class. That was me as a teacher having a conversation on the last day of school, redirecting them into chemistry. I had four other students saying, so are we having calculus next year? I said, no. They said, well, how am I gonna take it? So I call YBC up and said, do you have it online? They say, no. I call CBC up, I say, how many do you have left in your in your online class? Because of gas prices. And they said, we have seven spots left. That means our magically, the students I was working with have to magically get in those seven spots. So it's it's advising that has to happen in a more meaningful way.
Yeah, but the point I was trying to make, that shouldn't be happening in the junior year. We should have a counselor in the department that when we get them. The the counselor saying, what are you interested in going into? These are the classes you need. You want to teach English, then you need to take AP English. You need to have. I don't know if you offer creative writing. I don't know what else offered. But what I'm saying, it needs to start at a lower level to get these kids ready and they want to go straight into a four year.
That is, yeah, the advisory programs are meant as a support. And while those redundancies are good, it's not really the actual, you know, like, it is part of, it is part of our job and we're willing to sponsor that work. But that really needs to be taking place in that student services department or as far as like.
I think it's great to do that. I'm not saying.
The more more redundancies we have, the better, the better will be, yeah. But. You know, like that buck stops at somebody's desk. Um and so we're talking about the the primary focus of that work that's within there, right? Um and and I do appreciate the advocacy. Um I think that that's part of it too, to really. And I mean, that's where advisory programs are successful, that um the child has at least one meaningful relationship with an adult on campus. Where they have somebody to turn to that can advocate, where they have somebody to turn to who's asking about their interests or their future, like, you know, and so. That's where those things were.
And we also, we also do a lot of encouraging them. I had seniors this year and stay in school, take these classes, oh my goodness. That because you, I will also get an education like this.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know that we ran some numbers and whether it was COVID or not, um. One of our major concerns with dropping the credits is this year alone, we have eighty seven out of two hundred and twenty eight. Students that had met their credit requirements and those eighty seven were late start and early release. And we lose FTE money. And those kids, some of them are going to work after they finish their class year. Some of them, the late start ones in particular, are just sleeping, which I'm not saying that sleep is bad. That's not what I'm saying. But we lose that FTE money with late start and early release. And we worry dropping that credit requirement would. Increase that trend.
Thank you.
One of my recommendations for the board, there will be a test.
Uh not tonight, though, right?
And appoint yourself with the full schedule, K D twelve. Uh it's really fun. You guys should know that.
Well, thank you. Um well, you know, I think this was a very informative and it was great that you all came to. To contribute and I think.
Really appreciate a chance to.
Thank you. And Cliff, I think you brought up some good points. Um I guess what I. I think to move forward, me personally. Um what I would like to see, and it kind of solves maybe a twofold question, is is we can talk about credits and then we can talk about. These advanced placement or I can't remember the exact. There's a whole bunch of other words for it, but you know, these high level courses and Matt, you mentioned it at Bridgeport, and I think that's a great idea that.
It's not too far. I mean, there are tons of models, but in Washington, people are tipping cer- certain things on their ear.
Yeah.
And they're successful, right? And so I think that that's part of like, it, you know, like we're. We're pinning ourselves into an in either or, not a both and, right? And so I think it's a little hard on, yeah, both and is is, you know, we can be potentially more. More successful and blaze a trail that, you know.
Yeah.
Other people will follow them to say, oh, we can't do that because it's either or.
Yeah, so I think part of, hold on, hold on. Uh so I think part of like the next steps is, you know, we 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 start having these conversations. I don't know how we can set up a committee and keep it. Small enough to be functional. Um I hate to say that, but sometimes you get too many people, it gets hard to get stuff done. Um you know, but let's have these conversations. Let's look at. You know, off, try to figure out, you know, maybe we've modeled something where we get these high level courses so that, you know, kids are here longer. Not in in we keep them from going to CBC or YBC and we get more of these college type classes. You know, maybe it's junior, senior year that that's kind of the the model they follow uh from then on out. So I I I think it's a great conversation. I'm glad we had it, so I appreciate it. Um you know, we'll just keep working at it, keep hammering it out and we can come up with something. I think we can come up with something awesome between all of us, so. But.
Uh so my one, just last, last thoughts here. Um in that excellence model, trying to get our students to have that, those top end classes. I know uh my co teacher would uh kick my butt if I didn't mention, because I I had the privilege of getting to co teach for our. Um resource room and our um inclusion classes. And so one of the things that we do have to consider is like, are we, are we serving every population in that regard if we are? Only including, you know, these, these classes that have a high standard for excellence. Um that's, that's one thing that I just, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was said, because that would hunt me down otherwise. And the other thing is, I think if you, if you are interested in in forming a committee on this, I know. In our our building, we, if you set a number, our, I'm sure our teachers would be happy to nominate. Um we have experts in this district. We have professionals in the field who have a wealth of knowledge. And this is something that in the high school in particular, we're we're working to like utilize as best as possible. Um and trying to bring, like, share that wealth of knowledge as much as we can, utilize those people who are so knowledgeable. Um and we can find people to nominate and set a number. We can have people there who can be experts in certain areas.
Perfect, thank you.
I was just getting, piggyback on what Jason said, you have student representatives. Why not have staff representatives from each level that can also give reports from the ground level?
It's a good idea. Perfect.
I just have one more point to make. I think everybody and are a lot of people make the assumption that kids go. To do the running starts because we don't offer classes. I know families that they look forward to. We'll be running start. We're gonna get out of paying for two years of college. Seriously, folks, a lot of them look at it that way. I mean, we aren't just losing them because we don't have classes they want. They're pushed to do that to save the family money.
And I don't disagree with that, but sometimes running starts not for every child.
No, I I know that.
And. The chances of them not being able to compete or not, compete's not the right word. Do the work that it takes, then they fall behind twice.
Yeah.
Some kids are very important. You're probably never gonna stop them, but.
Yeah, I will say for like chemistry and physics in particular, we've had a number of students who have. Uh struggled to succeed in those classes without having those high school level kind of support.
Yeah, so the supports are different. And we also had it once, once upon a time, right? Not too many moons ago. Um we really focused on um students being a part of the socialization aspect of high schools. Right? So that was an important component that we were trying to market as well. And I do think that there's some value with being, being with peers. In fact, somebody brought it up, pulling all the smart kids out. Isn't the answer. They, you know, they're valuable and setting them for a restart, they're valuable part, so. Yeah, and to respond to that, um you know, the inclusionary piece. Um inclusion, inclusion and equity uh is really about access and providing access to students. Um so we should have challenging curriculum for all of our students, like the degree home, and we should, we should work to try and get them to those high standards. And so, yeah, um we're not, we're not leaving students out. I mean, that's it in my mind. Um.
Okay, well.
I just want to add, I I appreciate that we're together talking. And I want to encourage that we continue to find avenues for us to get together to talk about these important issues because. I for one would rather hear what you have to say rather than try to guess what you're saying. Um and um I mean. We're here to support you. We're here to support the kids and uh let's just do this together and try to do it the right way the first time, so, thank you. And I think Brian has something he wants to add or he's doing this.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with all of this and then we can move on. I just wanted to say that we do, I just. Looked it up to make sure, but we have twenty six classes, twenty six offerings at the high school that were able to offer students college credit. Right now, twenty six different classes. So I don't wanna, this is a, it's a delicate issue. I think it's one that we need to talk about, but I also don't want to paint a picture. That there are no up upper level offerings for students. We, and I mentioned this at graduation, we went from, you know, thirty seven percent of our students taking a college level course two years ago. To seventy five percent of our students taking a college level course at our high school. This year. And so we have upper level opportunities for students. Do we have all upper level opportunities for students? No. Could we, could we have more? We are always looking for ways to incorporate that and it's gonna require us to have these conversations. To continue to develop those and find ways to to continue to offer them and.
And we need to share that more. I mean, that uh those numbers are outstanding numbers, but how many people know those numbers?
We just got those numbers back.
Yeah, and so that's what we need to be broadcasting. We need to be sharing with our families and with our community and and just sharing that out there. What amazing things we are doing, instead of everybody judging what we're not doing. Applaud the things that we are doing because we are doing amazing things. So let's celebrate those.
Yeah, my own personal goal is that um every student would take and complete uh at least one. AP or college in the high school course upon graduation. So your general population of students would take at least one, one um high end course. And I I think that that's, yeah, yeah, over the next, well, before I leave. Um hopefully, you know, none of our graduating classes out there will have all the graduates in there saying, I took at least an AP course or college in the high school course. And um I do have a plan. I'm confident that I can go on to post secondary education or find a trade. Um and so, you know, like, uh I I understand that. And I know that Rick follows on there as well. I know that um our CTE courses um are important and there, there are a lot of trades out there as well. That um kids can get connected with, so.
So thank you. Good job.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Uh moving on and now that you're all here, the next one, I think is just as important. Um uh student discipline, its policy and procedure thirty two forty one. Um.
Nope.
Trapped.
What's that? Yeah.
Trapped you, so I'm sorry. Um so one of the things, I think, part of.
Moving in the right direction overall is is looking over our student discipline policy. And I don't know how many of you have had an opportunity to review it. Um but, you know, I think part of um. Resolving maybe some of the issues that we may have in in a few of our schools, I think it starts potentially here. Um so hopefully, um you've had time to review it. Uh the way I, I think at the. My personal opinion, as we look through this, this policy, it's, to me, it's a little. Um I don't know what the right word is. It gives you options. Um. I'm almost to the point where I think it needs to be more, you know, black and white. It needs to, you know, there needs to be specific. Uh actions as it relates to uh or specific consequences relating to actions. And, you know, I just opened it up, but you guys have any questions or comments or questions?
I think some of it's kind of soft, but then I'm kind of a hard person. Children, I don't care what age, if we do something and get away with it and there's no consequence, they're going to do it again. You know, I I would like to see possibly, uh if there's options, go with the. The one that will affect them the most. You know, I mean, I'm trying to think how to put it.
I I'm I'm gonna contend that suspensions um really don't. Uh don't mean a lot to students anymore. And so that was a big deal when. I was in school, but that that was like a, you know, a hit to your ego and everybody knew that you were suspended. Um I don't think that it has the same disciplinary effect on students. Um our principals can can probably speak to some of this better than I can, but. Um our principals can can probably speak to some of this better than I can, but. Um for some of our kids, I think that a suspension is a vacation. And i- is a kind of an outcome of that, our students get further and further behind. And so we've talked, I know that we've talked as a as a group before about. Uh seeking the maximum um penalty and really trying to send a message. So, yeah, I. I I do like the idea of that to try and straighten things, just straighten things out. I think that, you know. By increasing, the only way to become more disciplined is to increase the discipline you impose, right? Just like the the military that you have people who are radically changed, they go into the army. And they're a couch potato and then they get out of the army and they're really, you know, they're really good at it. And so I do think that there is. That through that method, um people can change, but I think that by and large, our student, you know, we do have. A fraction of our population of students that it doesn't matter if they get suspended or it's not a big deal to them. So, Mike or Brian, um what do you see it? What do you guys see in kind of the secondary level with? With uh discipline and responses?
Almost exactly what you said, uh you know, students, students aren't as affected as they used to be with suspensions. Being out of school. You know, I mean, with the new legislation and all of that as well, you're looking at, you know, the more progressive. Uh manner of this, so you know, start both and try to work your way so you can have more conversations and try to reach students through conversation. Counseling. Or with with our counselors, with our with our administrators, uh anybody else that's a partnership. Red assessments even, um partnership with outside agencies, uh we have a number of people that we work with to try and reach kids. It's a matter of reaching kids and how we reach them. The more conversation and and ways that we can include them in the building, um to get them engaged, the better. And so my personal belief is is, you know. Kicking a kid out of school. Might feel good to those of us who grew up in that situation, but it's not really effective. For this population of students that we have. And it it is a change. It is it is definitely a change in in how we do things. But it's for us trying to find ways to connect with students and and the students that are creating behavior problems or have behavioral problems. Are the students most in need of that connection and we try to put them in touch with with teachers that. That's our teachers are awesome. They're awesome. They they find ways to connect with kids. And I I briefly alluded to it at graduation and I'll say this again is that. When kids come to graduate, they're a little fearful going out into the world. And you hear comments that I'm not prepared for the world. I didn't learn anything in high school. I learned to tie my shoes and, you know, and a lot of them, those comments aren't scholastic in nature. And when we're talking about school and learning, they learn so much about working with people and making connections and finding what is meaningful to them. And the kids that are behavior behavioral, they really need those connections. And so that's what a lot of this policy is. Is making connections and finding ways to do that.
Do, I I agree totally agree that um suspending a student is just like, uh it's a holiday. But do we do any in-school suspension where a student uh deserves to be removed? Um that they are put into, and I know that requires staffing and and that, but. My experience was in-school suspension was not something that was a lot of fun. Yeah, they hate it. And the other thing was, um, you know. Forcing that parent involved, making, you know, making sure that those parents. And those are the parents, those parents whose kids are consistently in in trouble. Are really the parents that are struggling to. To know how to parent. And so, you know, it's almost like you're having to bring them in and giving them lessons on. Parent involvement, but I mean, do you, do we have that when you, when a child is at that middle school, high school level when. Is acting out consistently and they reach that point where they have um that in-school suspension? Do you bring the parent in at all?
Absolutely, we do. We try to include the parent at every level possible.
Well, that's great.
We have, there's been a number of times, we have three offices at the new high school that are available. We have kids sitting in those. I won't say quite often, but when it's required to get them out of class, we have students come and sit in the office and the administration. Uh monitors that. I know the middle school also has situations like that, um and rooms available for them to use as well. Um so yes, we tried to do all of that. We tried to, you know, build on the steps um and try to connect at the lowest level possible and then. You know, you work your way up and if it leads to a suspension, then, you know, it leads to a suspension, but that's down the road and try to make those connections.
Right.
I have a a child that has many challenges. I have two children and I appreciate in this language. Uh trauma-informed approaches, restorative justice practices, but the reason that we have students, just as Brian's talking about, that. They make bad choices behaviorally and sometimes when we look at an individual that's making bad choices behaviorally, we think what's wrong with you? But instead, we need to ask what has happened to you? Because usually if we can get at to the um what has happened to that individual, maybe it was just that day, something happened to them, maybe. The parent yelled at them or didn't get breakfast that day and they're running low on energy or you didn't get their meds that they actually needed and it's affecting their behavior. You don't remember that as a teacher. So I appreciate the policy is is saying that we need to think about the individual and why they're responding emotionally to where we are in behavior. At the same time, parents need to know that their children are going to be safe in foster school districts. So if there's a way in the language to help. Parents feel like their children are safe, to include that in the policy of we strive. With our highest goal of creating an environment that is safe for all students, considering the emotional background of every student. Um I I think that is important to have in a policy to also keep in mind the safety of every student and just helps communicate. That we're looking at all aspects of behavior and all aspects of safety.
Uh I think that that's, it's great and in concept, but I think that when some of the things go down that like we've seen, like there's a. This fight is posted in social media or a child tells a teacher F you, right? I think those are things that we, I just think that there's, you know, like the restorative practices intuitively, it makes sense. But uh when we start looking, you know, like sometimes culturally we get criticized that the culture of the building is sliding. And that one bad apple spoils a whole bunch and that, you know, you have one child. Uh dictating or setting what the culture is like, because if they can get away with it, then other students can get away with it too. So I do, yeah, I think there's a, yeah, there is, there is a little bit of a balance there over the past year. Um we have, and I know that the board members have filled in many, many calls um of community members. Who have, you know, just been asking what is going on there? And and on top of that, we also have substitutes and people coming in trying to open and saying. I refuse to work with that building because the kids are rude, they're flat out obnoxious and there's no respect anymore. And so. There's, you know, what we're trying to, I think there are a couple of different things we're trying to delineate here. Number one, what's the governance? You know, what's the policy and how are we gonna govern? What is that? And then what does that look like in practice with the most challenging student? And with the student who doesn't cause any trouble, right? Like, uh what graces are we gonna, are we going to um? Allow them. And so in some times, I I would even say, and Michael can talk this a little bit, that the optics are actually worse than. What's going on? For instance, right, we pulled some data and prior to the pandemic, like my first year here. There were more fights at Housel Middle School than there actually was this year. Well, what's the difference? Well, for two years, we didn't have any fights and kids weren't home and. And things like that. And then when we came back, there's a new social media platform, TikTok and all these different things that. Now, not only is it out there, we forgot that these things can take place, but it's really out there in the face and in very violent ways. And so. I think that that's part of it, trying to figure out where we as a district are gonna fall on some of these issues in working with students. And then what resources do we have? The restorative program, social justice. We were talking in in our safety and security meeting, but it's not that we don't believe in those, but we haven't allocated resource. Towards those types of programs. And so we talk about them in concept. I'm like, well, this would be really, really great. We haven't staffed it or made any commitment around that. And so we don't really know if, we have done training around ACEs or. Trauma-informed training, but we haven't really um decided to take a next step and say, well, what, you know, what's this concept that's out out there? And would it work for Prosser? People, will people be accepting of that? So, Michael, did you have? I I referenced you in the data, is there anything?
Well, I think that's, you know, the the part that that I've heard all these, you know, folks here from the high school talk about is. What is actually happening on the ground? What is the data? What, you know, what is, what is reality included in that conversation? Um, you know, we've, as a, as a board, we heard that the middle school is out of control and we need to get back to where we were before the pandemic. And I I don't think that that's really what we want, because the year before the pandemic, we have a sixty-three percent reduction in fights from that year to this year. Um assaults and violence were down just that sixty percent from from there before and it's in it. I'll just read the percentages from fifteen sixty-nine, reduction of forty-one percent, sixty-five, sixty, sixty-eight and sixty-three. Over the past five years, we were at a pretty high level. This year, we. Um had some hires that were um beneficial to us being able to look at that. Teachers were more attuned to the situation. We allocated resources in a way that we haven't before and um more than half reduced the number of. Um fights and assaults. But as we were talking about passing the levy. Um there were people putting on there, I'm not gonna vote for the levy because there's a fight every day. So the the belief and and what's being put out there versus the reality are two different things. And so. I would like to see these numbers of zero. Yeah, I I don't think there needs to be any fights or any assaults. That's not, Chris, when I don't wake up and say, you know what? We're fourteen, I wish we could get fifteen. That's not at all. And and for the past number of years that I've been a principal, there's one, one year where I haven't had one of my own kids there. And so I have to look all their parents in the eyes, but also my spouse and my kids and say, you're gonna go to a safe place today. And so. Um I'm for any of the pieces that we need to put in, whether that starts from and and maybe go back to what you had said. We do um have of, you know, the the continuum, if you will, of disciplinary services. What we don't have. Are a couple of after-school and weekend. We've talked about Saturday school, we talked about, I told Chris, I'll volunteer my time. I gotta have a kid that's in seventh grade next year. He's gonna have practice till five o'clock. I've got all the time in the world after school to sit with kids and. And and but it's more than just sitting with kids. It's working on, um you know, plans. Here's what we did wrong. Here's how we're gonna correct that. Here's how we're gonna move forward. Not, here's a next step. And and I don't wanna jump ahead, but um you know, Jason, you talked about black and white. Being able to have that conversation with, um you know, with the kid and their parents, say, here's what you did wrong. Here's a consequence this time. If it happens again, here's the next steps and 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 they get progressively um more costly to you as a student for your freedom, for your activities, for your schooling. And whatnot. So being able to have those conversations and and for shout out, because our kids. Um at the most, but I don't wanna speak about the high school, their their frontal cortices aren't developed yet. And so what we get is. Man, you you knew you were gonna get trouble, right? I didn't care. They weren't gonna talk crap about me. And so being able to really work through that thought process that our kids have. Um but at the same time, there's consequences for that and and we need to be able to have safety um for our kids. So I think there's a uh. I'd like to see a deeper look. It's more than just what is on social media that we as adults put out there. Um there is information, there is data that we have, but we haven't had a discussion about that at all this year. It's all been in social media and what's been thrown out there. And I don't have the ability to come back and say, no, here's the truth, because then I break the law of what I'm talking about, student discipline and specific things. So. I would appreciate being able to have that conversation with ensure that information, uh but I don't know that we can do that always in an open um setting. So that's, that's one issue. The other, um and and I'll I'll shush after this one, but. A couple of years ago, we had a, or a few years ago, we had a policy and it was like, here's state law, here's district rules, here's building rules. Very clear down top to bottom, we're able to say you broke a school rule, you broke a building rule, you broke a state law, whatever it might be. And we had that conversation with. Um chief earlier about, you know, what is, um when we look at this, the the procedure is twenty-one pages. The policy is like four or five, those are usually shorter. Um it's when we get to the the charts and I and I don't disagree with the behavior chart. You did this, and so here's the possible consequences. My concern is when we look at the matrix. The matrix is two pages. Three pages, but there are fifty-four footnotes to it. Fifty-four footnotes, so you have to go back and reference multiple RCWs, multiple LAX. One of them is when you look on page one of the district matrix. Type five, because there's six different types of behavior violations and severity levels. Type five is assault two. And I'm just picking this one. You can pick all of them because they almost all have. But when you look up what assault two is, that's to be differentiated from assault one. And to do that, you have to go into. And look at all or part of or some of three different RCWs. And so. I think clarity is huge for us. Here's what assault two is and be able to name that to some degree, more so than to say, well, you know. Jeez, mom and dad, um you know, we're looking at assault two. Well, what does that mean? Well, let me reference three different RCWs. And bring in, I believe it's footnote fifty-two, fifty-six and thirty-five. Um so clarity in that would be good for us. And you talked about that, Jason, that black and white, here's clarity. Um and I know when we're talking about this kind of level with all the new um legislation, there's a lot to it. And there's a lot to unpack as seen by a policy a few years ago that we were able to take the policy, fold it in half, give it to kids. And be able to tell every kid, here's the, here's your student rights and responsibilities. It was in a, in a fairly small document. We used to give every kid one of those. This would be, I mean, you're looking at, what, you know, thirty-five, forty pages, not counting all the fifty-four footnotes on the one document. So. Uh you know, as we're looking at that, I think for our kids, and I'm talking middle school here, clearer the better, more concise the better. Um and for our parents as well, um to be able to understand, here's all the things we're looking at, here's what all the pieces are. I know you guys have filled in. Several questions about, well, why did this happen? What happened here? What's the cost here? It'd be nice to be able to say, well, here's, here's the the reference form that we're all using. And we're all on the same page with that. So that's my, too bad, sorry.
I agree with what you're saying and I I love the numbers that you presented. I I think there's a component of this where. The we have this action, we have these actions, the consequences. Have, we have to address two separate pieces. We have to address the reformative piece of how we're gonna deal with that student. We also have to address the visible piece. What do students see? What do teachers see? And the issue that we're having is that we're doing these things in the background that which I completely agree with. We have to have that reforming piece. But if the students don't see consequences, actions and consequences, then we exacerbate the situation. Situation gets worse. And I think um there, I think that's a big part of the issue. Standardizing the numbers so that we see those numbers that, hey, we can say per building. The, you know, the, this level is going down, this level is going up, right? And we can, you know, that's something we can hold on to, that we can say to a parent, but also. We also have this piece that when we have a child that is, you know, attempting to throw somebody over the bench, banging somebody's head on the ground or whatever. Students have to see that there is a consequence. They have to understand that consequence or it sort of. It sort of goes into a black hole. The questions that I get from students after one of these incidents is exactly that. What happened? What's what what's gonna happen to this student? And when they see that student back in. You know, two days or or whatever, then. There, that's, that's, we're giving them a value statement of how we value that action. You know, how bad, what did we think was the level of the severity of that action? Um I, you know, it it's not, it's not an easy situation, right? I mean, we're sitting there and and the the fight that that. I was involved in stopping, there were um at the, my quick count while I was trying to stop the fight, there were nine kids. At the, my quick count while I was trying to stop the fight, there were nine kids. I had to weave my way around them with phones like this, filming the entire thing.
What's wrong with that picture?
By the time I got to my classroom. By the time I got to my classroom, it was already posted. There were students showing, Mr. Gamble, look what you did. That was a great technique. Always, already posted. We have got to address that. We do have to address the reformative piece of it. I totally agree, and I agree with the policy, and I agree with the the trauma training that we that we're doing. But we also have to address the visible piece of it to both students, parents and teachers.
I think, yeah, that. So the policy that these that we're looking at were. Of course, based upon state legislation. And there were some things that we could, we were able to fill in the gaps on. Like the tables and things like that, that there were some different models out there. But it. It's, I would venture to say that it's too cumbersome. To really be for practical use. Yeah. And so it's not, it's not as simple, it's not as simple as what it used to be. Yeah, when when I was a principal. There's a lot of stuff that I didn't have to do. I didn't really have to do re-engagement plans. I didn't really have to do anything other than the letter, boom, here you go. Right? But Peggy was right. There might be some mediums there where. I remember having a student and. He said, what are you gonna do suspending? I said, no, I'm gonna give you in-house, because you'll hate that, you know, you'll hate that more. So some of these things that we're able to, you know, say, check in your phone. You're gonna be sitting in this cubicle and you're gonna do your work. And then they tell their friends, I can't stand that. You know, so sometimes that has a a big ripple effect. The problem with kinda in-house suspension and doing that. Is that, you know, I I don't know. There's mixture views on it. And it it's tough to staff, or you have to keep watchful of students. Saturday school, as Michael had said. You know, that that might be a method that we can, we can try. But I do think that we do have to do something. You know, and and we need to, we need to work better at working with parents and informing parents. But we do need to take some action because some of the things that happened this year. I I would say from our perspective isn't acceptable. I know all of us were, you know, we. Internally, we kind of felt beat up and maybe a little bit exploited by social media. But it, you know, it's tough to have a building and some of that stuff go on. You know, you weren't the one in the fight. You didn't encourage it, but. Just to, you know, kind of be dragged through the mud and wish something different for your building, actually. Right? And and that's what gets posted. And that's the story that gets gets told around the community. And so. There does need to be some action.
It used to be legal in the state of Washington to assess monetary fines on student in practice.
Yeah, depending on what the student does, you still can do restitution. And so if if there's vandalism and you are sure about. Who does it, you know, the school can, and there still is some limited, you still can press charges in certain. Depending upon the offense in certain areas. But yeah, just to keep all options open, I think that's that's important.
Jody, sorry, Julie.
I'm looking at this, I'm sorry, Michael. This policy is this example of a district. So this wasn't created by Prosser.
The initial one that we adopted.
Or no, this, the one that says model, like the, like that Michael referred to, like the type six.
Yeah, that was Wasta. So you have, you have different people that. Was a really kinda. Was delayed in writing and creating this. In fact, I think that they waited for districts to go out and write it first. And I think the policy that we have. I wanna say that we were working. Our lawyer, our legal counsel reviewed it, but. I think that it was, we pulled some of those pieces from like Bellevue School District. And maybe their in-house legal counsel assisted in writing it. But the model policy is. Is Wasta's version on that. They have. Abigail Westbrook, her name is, who's their in-house. In-house lawyer at Wasta. And so she takes state law and interprets it. And then that becomes a model throughout the state.
I was just wondering, so you're like, possibly this, I was like, yeah.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Julie.
Um, I'm Julie Vernell. So my experiences with the Boston School District are pretty multifaceted. First off, I'm a parent, and I have two kids that have graduated and two kids that are still in the district. My important with the district is sort of a parent educator and then a teacher. And then this past year, I had the opportunity to complete an administrative internship with the district. And so as part of that, I was able to cover fragmentary in that district, K R V, H I C, household. So I've had a lot of exposure to discipline stuff. I teach degrees in special education. And my first year when I was teaching, I did the behavioral program that we had just for the year. So I've had a lot of different exposure to like the trauma-informed practices, resurled justice. Building relationships with the kids, I can't be more, it's huge. We've seen firsthand. Reduction of behaviors with students that we've been able to form those relationships with. The other side of that is when you do have those behaviors that are happening. With my experience this year, it would have been really nice to be able to say, you know, I come into, say, from the record, Jody, for me. I come into this school and this child is sent in, and, you know, this is the third time they've been blatantly disrespectful. If there would have been something that I could turn to and, okay, here is a matrix, step one, step two, step three, this is where we're at, right? This is what it is. So something that's a little more, and I know you can't have it black and white because of extenuating circumstances with students. But there absolutely, I agree, there has to be something that shows the students consequences. Shows the students are observing that behavior consequences. Because that, like they said, it it ripples out. And if a student, you know, like Mr. Ellis said, that's a few to the teacher, and they're back in class ten minutes later. What's to stop the next guy from doing that? Or then do it the next day. There has to be something. So I, like Michael is saying, is we could simplify it. Turn it into like a matrix that we could go down, we would address step one, we would address step two, this is where we're at. Consistency. And I think that's part of the community reaction we're seeing as well. Is, you know, this child did this and and they got nailed with that. And this child, it didn't do anything. Well, there's so much of it right now that's open to interpretation. And it would be. Simple and it would be, you know, for my very naive inexperience. You know, with what I was doing this year, it would be really nice to just have that guide and that outline that we could all follow and have. District-wide consistency possible.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it. Chase.
So we talked about that there's been a change in culture. And I remember our generation that kids would break up the fights. They don't do that now. They take out their phones and they. And I believe. From what I've seen here, as well as friends that teach in other districts, that. Phones are. Not helping any situation. And I do know that the district committee has proposed a policy. And I think that would be a great way to initiate some of this. Because now kids are only looking at videoing the situation. And I've even approached kids like it assemblies. That they will be taking pictures. And I will try to stop them and say, please, you don't have that person's permission, or they'll take a picture of me. And I will say, you do not have my permission. You need to delete that. And it's just causing so much conflict. Because they have been hiding behind their phone screens for two years. And they haven't learned how to use them responsibly.
That's a good point.
So my my question is, this model, I I'm. Very interested in our trauma-informed practices. And I've seen a number of students acting out my own classroom. I mean, through our. Through our. Building relationships with students, I I know kind of what's going on and why they're acting out and do everything I can in order to. Support them. And I have, I know that I have. Headed off certain situations, fortunately, but like. I I'm also not a, you know, mental health support expert. And so I guess my, one of my questions is, like, along with this, do we have? Are we going to be able to give our students that social, emotional and mental health support? That they need when they, when this is something that is, you know, trauma that is manifesting and lashing out. Something like that. I know we have a possibility of like our. Men, our mental health counselor at the high school, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. And so I'm wondering like where that's, where that's a port for that portion of. Are these other schools that this model is coming from? Do they have a mental health professional onsite to help these students out? Because I know in other districts that I, when I was up in student teaching in need, there was a. Mental health professional that the students would, if they were in a fight, they would automatically be in conversation with that mental health professional. The other question is, for those like, those who are standing by and choosing to pull out their phones. Is it possible to have that be an infraction itself of like, standing by and recording that itself is? You know, you get a day of in-school suspension for just kind of choosing to exploit the situation.
Yeah, I like that one.
When I was growing up, that's exactly, in in the school that I went to high school, that wasn't an infraction. We didn't have phones. I'm old. We didn't have any cell phones, but just standing around encouraging the fight. One of the teachers would stop the fight, the other teacher would be taking names. My name was on that list. That was an infraction.
No, it makes sense.
One of the things that really helped me, my first join Prosser High School at the old building. And coming up with ideas about how to deal with this, and as, you know, first time teacher, I was all nervous. There were three big words right in front of that old church. Safe, respectful, productive. So no matter what I did, I could always sell it in those terms, like that is what this school is about. And that can really help me because all the other teachers had the same three words, like, you know. What's this school about? It's safe, respectful, productive. So. I mean, I love, I mean, we've heard both the advantages and disadvantages of the detail thing. But for the kids, you gotta have something that's bite-sized. And that's what is the foundation of the school culture. So everybody is on the same page on that. You can tell them. Hey, you're not being safe, hey, you're not being respectful, or you're not being productive. If you're just standing around taking photos of the fight instead of helping out. Or doing something like that. So, I mean, whatever you adopt, I think it'd be nice if you had something just bite-sized. To just advertise it so we could, across the district maybe, or even on each building, go. This is what this school is about, and you need to know that from day one when you come in here. We're all here and we're all about this.
Not good points. Any other comments?
I didn't want to get back to what I said earlier. I I sincerely believe. That trying to help a child understand what I was getting at, is I want the harshest penalty. Possible when a child inflicts harm on another child, like the fights that we've had. It should zoom right to the top instead of, gosh, why did you do that? When, if you. If you have the need to kick somebody in the head, you don't need to be in the school, you know. And I, do parents even? When the parents have been brought in, do they show remorse that their child has acted this way? Do they want to? To get to the bottom of it?
We have many conversations with parents.
You know what?
I meant.
We have many conversations with parents. And I I don't, I don't really wanna get into the specifics of conversations.
I would think most parents would be mortified that their child would do that, that that's coming from.
Old school.
Old school, you know, but I just wanted to. Get that in there, the harshest. Discipline possible.
I think we need to be really, as we're looking through this, we need to be very consistent. And.
Simple.
Yeah, it needs to be simple, it needs to be consistent and. Suspending the child is a vacation. So we need to figure out a way to make this. Our point that this is not acceptable behavior and. This is the result of your behavior. You created this. And you get the, yeah.
So. If that works, well, I appreciate that. I think this will be a continuing conversation. And like I said, well, you know, make it to work together. Come up to a good conclusion. So I, you know, I appreciate the input. It's very helpful. Okay, moving ahead, we have draft policy two, three, three, seven, disability history month.
So we had a few of these, and we talked about. Just updating our policies. And so. Some of these are required policies through Wasta. And I think that one of them is encouraged. But, yeah, so the disability. Disability history month is. You know, this is the next set of three that we're looking at. For board approval. Or to kind of walk through that same process.
Is this what we currently are doing?
It says that we don't currently have this one on the books. Or the next three we don't currently have on the books.
Any questions? Any questions on the disability history?
I read through it, and I think it's a great app. It's teaching children to be more empathetic. See the person, not the disability, the way I got it. I liked it.
So would we be providing the the staff with the material they would need to implement?
Yeah, in a lot of cases, this is, it takes on kind of a. Homegrown approach. And so. Our principals, in fact, I I think it's October, that there, the state. The state has different days set up that you're mandated to, like Veterans Day. You're mandated to do something for Veterans Day. October is disability awareness month. September, you have Constitution, Constitution Day. That you're required to teach about like citizenship and the constitution. So the, I believe this is in falls in October. Is it usually, you know, there's either posters or oftentimes a student leadership gets them all.
Talking about getting assemblies.
Yeah.
At each school. Yeah. Which I think is a great idea.
So you'd be then provide, you would then be developing the procedure.
Yeah, I think we can bring it back. I don't know if we can add that to a first reading. Not mad at, you know, for there yet, but, yeah, I I don't see.
I'll send it out, just because we have some board members who. Are with us tonight. I'll send it out. In on my communications to the board, just. Just to start that conversation, I, you know, with policy, I don't think rushing through things is always the best approach. I think a slow and steady approach is best. And so. Yeah, to give it some thoughtful consideration.
We can add it to a discussion item.
Yeah, absolutely.
Again. Moving on to item E, policy twenty-four eleven, certificate of educational. Compete, competency. Thank you. Been a long week. Any questions? Comments, concerns?
It mentioned homeschooling. But I didn't understand, are we asking to qualify for this?
Yeah.
Okay, who who administers that?
So I believe this is the one that Brian and Yvonne brought forward. But the gist of it is that if a student is able to demonstrate on a task, then they can. They can receive credit or be labeled as competent in that.
Homeschool kids or?
This, this is a different one.
So. What we need to do is, it's like, makes me think of like, if a student went to war or something. It's just like, that's, that's the type of, that we could award a competency for graduation, but.
And this is part of a policy that is essential?
Encourage, yeah. So there, these are either essential or encouraged. Encourage, yeah, so there, uh, these are either essential or encouraged. Which ones are of a higher priority for districts?
So what, like item C, um, in this, it says, the lack of curriculum or instruction which constitutes appropriate learning experiences for the student is part of the or one of the reasons or criterion to seek that. So. And I'll probably go back to our previous conversation. So we had a person in that was super smart at math, didn't take calculus, but took the calculus final. Could they, is that what this is saying?
Yeah.
Um, I am curious. I've seen this before when I worked at the universities, it's basically credit for knowledge, like you're saying, someone has the smarts or, or like getting a lot, um, passing the law exam without going to law school. Passing the bar exam. So there are some institutions that will add on a caveat of like, you have to initiate the idea that you're going to challenge or earn credit before you've completed so much of a particular class. So, um, the district might want to consider if a student had taken, let's say, um, geometry and failed it, would we want to allow them to challenge the geometry class by taking a simple one test to prove that they do have the competency if they failed the class? Like, do you want to consider that type of a situation?
I don't, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me? That is not this poli-, that's not what this policy is. That's a, that's a credit for competency, it's a different policy.
Yeah, I, so I think we're talking about the same policy, the same concept of competency credits, but I think this is the wrong policy member. So I think there's
The speaker turned up.
I think that's what she's saying, this is the wrong policy member.
Right, to be honest, I'm not, if you, I don't know if you guys can hear me. Okay, so the po-, this policy that's in here, I'm not really familiar with. Um, but the credit for competency is, it, that's actually already defined in our policy generally, but you could have more specific ones around certain content, that's a different, that's a wholly different, it's not this policy. This is, I, sounds more like there was some sort of big issue or somebody didn't do their job and so you can award them like a special diploma is what this looks like. But again, I don't know that much about it.
Okay, see, that's what I was having trouble, is it for one class or is it to get like some
Yeah, similar in nature to the one that, um, Deanna and Brian had proposed. There is a RCW attachment on the, on the bottom of it. So I do think that it's probably, as a result of that, maybe required.
So Brian, is it for one class or is it?
They have a different one. Yeah, so there's a, there's a different one that we'll bring, um, to another meeting. And so I guess, I don't know, if you want to table it now, we can wait till we have the policy for us. I mean, I, I can't correct that, I guess. And this is a work session anyway, so.
Yeah.
Basic idea, I can tell you the basic idea of what we're trying to do. We have the statewide assessment, um, smarter dance consortium. The basic concept is if students score high enough and proficient on that test, then they can get credit for that, for passing that at that level. Um, now, our students minus this year, which was a unique year because everybody tested this year, our students will test as sophomores. So when you test at the end of your sophomore year, say you get proficient and you get a proficient score in math, you could recoup a credit, say you failed the math, a math class as a freshman or sophomore, you could get up to one credit of math for showing proficiency on that test. That's the basic concept. And that would be for both, for all three, that would be for, um, the science which they take as a junior and we would, we specify which classes you can't get an upper level of science credit for, but you could get a lower level of science credit for showing proficiency. So it's science, math and the other.
Would that be for classes attempted or like?
Classes, classes that they would take. Well, it would be classes they'd attempted, cause they don't take it until their sophomore year.
And so I imagine this will come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At another work session. Getting down to the last one here. Policy and procedure twenty-four twenty, greeting and progress reports.
Yeah, this is one that's encouraged, um, but it's about setting up a system of setting up progress reports, so parents know where their students are.
Do we not have one?
I don't think it's scheduled. We do have, I mean, we do send out grades. And, uh, it says in the policy that we would set up a schedule for, um, progress reports.
Gotcha.
We were looking at this policy and I think we would need some clarification from the teacher's perspective where it says, um, if the teacher does not so advise the students in writing, the teacher may not use attendance and participation in the grading process. So laying that out in the syllabus, would that be sufficient or does it need to be?
Yeah, in the syllabus.
Okay.
So what, I think the, what they're trying to get to is a standardized system of grading practices. So it's not arbitrary.
Let's bring this one back. I don't, I don't know if it's ready to go back for, for reading yet, or if we want to table for a discussion at.
Probably, yeah, probably all three of these will come back as a discussion item. I don't know if the next board meeting is appropriate or we should wait for one after. Just, yeah.
That works. That, that's, uh, the last of our discussion items for tonight. So future board meetings, we got one next Wednesday, uh, right here at six. I don't know, we had some issues last meeting with the audio out there.
Yeah.
I know by policy, we changed it from the auditorium in here. Are we even, if it, if we're to have a number of people show up again, we're gonna have to adjourn and go into the auditorium?
Yeah, um, that'd probably be the best strategy we have packed out. Usually July is pretty calm, knock on wood. That's when we really start to get into the niche radio. Um, and that's when Craig, uh, Craig really starts to do his work as far as projections and this is what that, you know, the different, um, budgetary areas and what that really looks like. So that's given over to really examining that and talking and reviewing that. So.
All right.
In, in the past, there's been it, that process has been a multi-meeting process where feedback was given about, you know, can we see what's suggested?
All right, well, let's, uh, it'll, so meeting next Wednesday, June twenty-second, right here, Prosser High Library Workroom at six P M.
We have an executive session.
Yes. And then we're, we're gonna recess the regular meeting and go into an executive session. Uh, to review the performance of a public employee. Uh, RCW forty-two thirty-one, ten, one G. To evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee, however subject to RCW forty-two thirty-one, forty-four, discussions by governing body of salaries, wages and other conditions of employment generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. And when a governing body elects to make the final action, hiring, setting the salary of the individual employee or class of employees or discharging or disciplining an employee, that action will be taken in an open public meeting. How long?
Let's look at. We're gonna recess for ten minutes. Did you say? Yeah, let's do, uh, let's do thirty minutes, so we'll put us right at like nine fifty.
Okay, we'll recess the meeting at nine oh eight and reconvene at nine thirty-eight.